There's a terrible day in the history of Israel. There've been a number of community events over the last couple of days commemorating this. Yesterday, there was an event in Mount Pleasant with several hundred people from the community. We had elected officials at the federal level, state level, local level, bipartisan. It was wonderful to see. And it's just a reminder that there are some serious challenges in our world right now. And just thoughts and prayers go out to everybody over there, including the hundred people still held in captivity, including American citizens over there, children, women, elderly. It's really an awful situation and hoping and praying for peace there and around the world. But just wanted to commemorate the one year anniversary and thank the city for its really strong support for the Jewish community in the days after October 7th with our resolution that we adopted that was copied by jurisdictions all over the country as well as the amendment of our hate crimes ordinance to include an antisemitism definition which received recognition from the Israeli embassy. The city of Charleston has led the way on this very important issue. So with that, I will turn it over back to council member Shealy and again appreciate the opportunity to say a few words.
Let us pray. Our dearly Father, we thank you for the so many blessings you've given us. Lord, we ask that you will be with the people caught in the conflicts, suffering in the Middle East and that you'll bring peace and that you'll allow evil to be defeated, Lord. We ask that you will be with our neighbors in the upstate of South Carolina, western North Carolina, Georgia and Florida, who are recovering from the storm. We ask that you'll heal those who are injured, allow those who are lost to be found, allow supplies, food and water to get to those in need, that you'll comfort those who have lost so much and allow them to fully recover from the devastation. Be with those, Lord, that are in the path of the storm heading toward Florida right now. Allow them to find protective shelter. And we humbly ask that you will show your mercy and calm the storm. Lord, we ask that you'll be with our Charleston police officers and firefighters who are deploying to some of the areas affected by the storm, that you'll be with them and allow them to comfort, to protect the people who are in need up there. Lord, we recognize the great work that the Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired are doing, Lord, and we ask that you'll continue to bless them in their mission and that you'll bless us tonight and help make our decisions fair, just and acceptable to you. For it's in your holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd now like to ask Councilman Member Brady and Ann Reed to join me up on the diocese. How are you?
Good.
How are you? So this is a proclamation recognizing ABV Awareness Month. Whereas the visual health of our residents is essential to the continued well-being and vitality of our families, businesses and communities. And whereas access to free skills, training and support services is essential for the health, safety, functionality and continued well-being of our residents who have suffered irreversible vision loss. And whereas 7.7 of South Carolinians over the age of 65 reported a visual impairment in a 2019 study and rates of vision loss are projected to double by 2030 due to the aging population. And whereas the city of Charleston recognizes vision rehabilitation services as essential services to aid individuals following vision loss and developing adaptive approaches to daily tasks, developing travel skills, becoming less dependent on sighted caregivers, participating more in their communities and joining the workforce. And whereas the Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired, South Carolina, ABVI, a 501(c)(3) founded on October 14th, 1936, has provided services to help adults who are blind or visually impaired develop skills to live safe, independent and rewarding lives for 86 years. And whereas ABVI provides free vision rehabilitation services for all adults with visual impairments in South Carolina with a focus on Berkeley, Charleston and Dorchester counties through skills training, education and support services at a Charleston facility through community-based trainings and virtual training platform. And whereas the month of October contains National Sight Day on October 13th, ABVI's birthday on October 14th, as well as National White Cane Day on October 15th. And whereas the observance of October is ABVI Awareness Month will help raise awareness of visual disabilities and challenges individuals with visual impairments face daily, the capabilities individuals with visual disabilities have, particularly in the workplace, and the importance of vision rehabilitation in our community. Now, therefore, I, William S. Cogswell, Mayor of Charleston, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 is ABVI Awareness Month. Now, I'd like to ask Ms. Reed if she'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. Mayor Cogswell, members of the council, we are honored to receive this proclamation declaring October 2024 ABVI Awareness Month. We use this month to bring awareness to the overwhelming need for educational accessibility and vision rehabilitation services in our community and the efforts ABVI puts forward to address this need. Vision rehabilitation services teach individuals who are blind or have low vision adaptive approaches to daily tasks so that they can live independent, safe and fulfilling lives. These services are essential as they help people adjust to their life with a disability. Picture your daily routine, brushing your teeth, getting dressed, making your breakfast. Now imagine doing these things without relying on your vision. At ABVI, we teach our clients adaptive approaches to these tasks and countless others so that our clients can live more independently. Now, there is a critical need for vision rehabilitation services in our state. Recent studies show that there are close to 300,000 adults in South Carolina living with a visual disability. And as Mayor Cogswell just said, rates of vision loss are projected to double this decade. And despite those statistics, access to vision rehabilitation services is limited in South Carolina. These services are not offered comprehensively in your local doctor's office or in your hospital because most vision rehabilitation services are not covered by your insurance. To put this in perspective, if you were to lose your vision tomorrow, neither the white cane you would likely need to move around your home or your community, nor the vision rehabilitation services you would need to safely use that white cane would be covered by your health insurance. Luckily, anyone living in South Carolina with a visual disability can come to ABVI, a nonprofit, to learn free vision rehabilitation skills training. And we are working hard to make sure that these essential services are available to all who need them. And we are partnering with organizations across the state to make sure that individuals of all ages have access to the skills training they need to learn to live safely with their disability. Recognition like this proclamation helps to add weight to the messaging surrounding the need. So on behalf of our board, our staff, and most importantly, the individuals we serve, thank you again for your support. We are truly grateful.
Okay, I'd now like to invite Councilman Seekings, Suzie. I'm gonna work on this one. Ry Bickey, right, look at that. Valerie Sessions, Valerie Warnock, Katie Miller and Nina Magnuson, all up to the diocese for proclamation honoring women in tech. How are you all? Nice to meet you. Yeah. Good to see you. Okay, whereas the city of Charleston makes this proclamation to recognize Charleston Women in Tech on the occasion of her 10th anniversary. And whereas it is Charleston Women in Tech's mission to empower, connect and inspire women in technology. And whereas Charleston Women in Tech seeks to achieve greater diversity across all STEM fields in the tri-county region by increasing opportunity, participation and achievement for all. And whereas the city of Charleston wishes to acknowledge and express her gratitude to Charleston Women in Tech for her mentorship, training and networking programs. And whereas Charleston Women in Tech remains a safe enclave for her mentorship with support, advocacy and guidance with no membership dues or fees. And whereas Charleston Women in Tech served the Eastside Community Center, St. Julian Divine, Rosemont Community and the Robert Mills Manor by providing the Code On Training Program to some of the city's most vulnerable children. Now, therefore, I, William S. Cogswell, Mayor of the City of Charleston, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 10th, as Charleston Women in Tech Day.
Hi, on behalf of all of the Charleston Women in Tech Board, I would just like to say how proud we are of the past 10 years. And we're so thankful to the city of Charleston for your continued support as we continue to serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask Angela Mack to join me up on the diocese. And we also have, I just want to make, I don't know if we have a diocese big enough for this. We have several of the Gibbs Board members here with us today. So if you're on the board of the Gibbs, if you please just raise your hand, let everybody know. Thank you. Okay. This is proclamation obviously honoring the longstanding relationship the city of Charleston has with the Gibbs Museum of Art. So whereas this April, the Gibbs Museum of Art is celebrating its 120th anniversary in its co-ownership by the city of Charleston and the Carolina Art Association. And whereas when the city of Charleston accepted the legacy gift of James S. Gibbs in 1898, it agreed to build what is now the oldest museum in the southeast for the betterment of the citizens of Charleston through the education and the visual arts. And whereas the Gibbs was the city's first brick and mortar investment in the arts predating its purchase of the Dock Street Theater in 1935. And whereas later, the Gibbs also gave birth to Historic Charleston Foundation after the museum published in 1944 the first comprehensive inventory of historic structures in Charleston. And whereas as a teaching institution, the Gibbs Museum has trained generations of artists in our community and beyond. Gibbs Education Programs were the model for the arts education curriculum in Charleston County Public School System. Whereas the Gibbs groundbreaking scholarship and publications have changed how professors teach American art at colleges and universities across the country because of their emphasis on diverse story of art in the South. And whereas in 1972, the Gibbs was one of the most, was one of the first museums in the state and country to achieve accreditation through the American Alliance of Museums. And whereas since the 1990s, significant exhibitions have been featured in partnership with the nationally and internationally recognized institutions like the American Federation of Art, the Guggenheim Museum of Art, the Studio Museum in Harlem, the Metropolitan Museum of Art, the Smithsonian, Los Angeles County Museum of Art, the Chicago Institute of Art, not to mention the Royal Collection at Windsor Castle in the Louvre. And whereas in 2019, the Gibbs Museum won the South Carolina Governor's Award for Arts for their outstanding achievement and contributions to the arts in this state. And whereas artworks from the Gibbs 7,000-plus collection have traveled on loan to museums around the world, including Beijing, China, Bilbao, Spain, in part as part of major exhibitions. These objects have served as city ambassadors demonstrating the depth and breadth of Charleston's rich and diverse culture. Now, therefore, I, William S. Cogswell, Mayor of the City of Charleston, do hereby honor and commend the Gibbs Museum of Art for their outstanding contribution to educating and enriching the Charleston community through the visual arts. Now I'd like to call on Ms. Angela Mack to say a few words.
Well, thank you all very much for this great honor. And on behalf of the Board of Directors, several of whom are here, as well as our board chair, Spencer Lynch, we want to extend our heartfelt appreciation for today's wonderful proclamation recognizing the impact of the Gibbs, the Gibbs has had on the creativity of our city and beyond. As a teaching institution, the Gibbs has trained generations of artists in our community, including our mayor and the children and grandchildren of council member Keith Waring. Hundreds of thousands of students have received arts education through tours, summer camp, winter camp, programs, lessons, lesson plans, family days, free days and art fairs. In fact, education programs through the Gibbs Museum of Art have been so impactful in the creativity, the creation of creativity in our community. Through our education programs like the Gibbs Distinguished Lecture Series, we've introduced influential artistic luminaries to our city like Jeff Koons, Maya Lynn, Fred Wilson. And next week, we will be honored to have Spike Lee as our guest for distinguished lecture. And these opportunities have expanded the scope and dreams of generations of artists from our city. Simultaneously, the Gibbs has either launched or amplified the careers and reputations of many of our local artists, including Jonathan Green, Mary White, Jill Hooper, Wes Frazier and Mary Jackson, for whom we have a gallery named. This is important work and we also help to support the commercial galleries in our community as well. Now we are poised to expand the Gibbs footprint with the joint purchase of the E.B. White Building at 141 Meeting Street from Beaumont Corporation. This acquisition has the potential to double the changing exhibition spaces that we so desperately need at the Gibbs and that are demanded by contemporary artists around the world. We look forward to this opportunity and to host new and exciting exhibitions at the Gibbs that currently we can't pursue because of our size. The Gibbs looks forward to this new adventure with the city and appreciates its commitment to the visual arts that dates back to 1905. Together, we hope to reconfirm the many advantages to reputation, diversity, education and dignity. A significant world-class accredited art museum provides the city of Charleston in perpetuity. Thank you so, so much.
Mr. Mayor.
Need a little brush up on my artwork, I'll say, but not your fault.
I'd like to follow up on the recognition. You know, we have five institutions in our city, obviously many more, but that we have integral relationships with, the Gibbs, the Children's Museum, the Aquarium, the Gill Yard and now the International African American Museum. Hundreds of thousands of children have been impacted in most positive ways by those institutions. I'm proud of our city with having those relationships. Ms. Mack pointed out that my children and grandchildren have experienced the youth programs over at the Gibbs. As a matter of fact, my youngest daughter, and yes, I'm bragging, came through there as a 10 or 11-year-old. She is now, she got a master's from Arts and Entertainment Management from Columbia College, Chicago. And she's now a producer with Justice Television, which is a private cable network of the U.S. Justice Department at the NAC up in Columbia. As a matter of fact, little known fact, I was sharing that with our mayor. And what did you tell me about your youth program coming through the Gibbs?
Yeah, I didn't go quite as far with my training at the Gibbs in the art world, but certainly did enjoy it. And I think I still have a clay pot that I spun there back in maybe 1980.
That's right around 50 years.
Stop with the counting.
Thank you.
Okay, on to public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight, on the Sumar Street Development Agreement. Madam, there's no presentation for this. I feel like we've hashed this out. But has there anybody signed up to speak on this matter?
So I think everyone who signed up for public hearings are actually speaking on other matters, not the development agreement. Was there anyone here who wanted to speak to the development agreement at the public hearing?
Person, Mr. Bryant raising his hand. So if you would come up, we'll give a minute and a half on this.
According to the South County Department of Revenue, from 2015 to 2023, I have no physical address. So who's before you right now is a person with no physical address, according to the governor. And so therefore, my speech should be on the record that there is no physical address for Anthony G. Bryant speaking before this body from 2015 to 2023. That's the facts. All right, so I've come before you like so many people who were with this investment on Sumar Street, with many that are at risk to be unhoused, unhoused and promptly unhoused. The real question with this matter is, is West Ashley a destination? When I look, when I look online, I'd be looking like, well, the peninsula is, you got 11 million people to come downtown, 11 million. That's larger than the city of New York. So the question becomes, are we inducing an investment to bring investment? Or should it be some investment to induce a lot of investment? Especially with a zero basis port D or whatever. So I don't have a problem. I look down, I live in the peninsula. So the peninsula starves because everybody West Ashley, want to turn West Ashley into a destination when it's suburban. But it was brought in by the county. The majority of West Ashley is unincorporated Charleston County. It had no direction.
Hi. Was there anyone else? Was there anyone else who needed to speak on the development agreement?
Okay. In terms of the agenda item on public hearings, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Of motion probably seconded. Any further discussion on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes. We have one abstention, two abstentions. Okay.
So council members, Mitchell, Councilmember Gregory abstained. All right. And then we have third reading.
Okay, we now have, we have motion and probably seconded for third reading. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
All right, and that's.
Sustained?
All right, and that's Mitchell and Gregory.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now on to approval of city council minutes. A motion probably seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. We're now on to citizens' participation, which is 30 minutes long. Madam clerk, how many people do we have signed up?
We have 10 people.
All right, so we will give, we got a big agenda tonight, so I'm gonna give everybody a minute. Please just echo that anybody who is coming up to speak needs to honor the rules of decorum. I'll give you one warning if you do not by hitting the gavel. If you hit it again, you'll be asked to leave and escorted out. We just ask that you again, be respectful, do not engage with any council members directly or call them out by name. This is not a question and answer session. So looking forward to hearing what folks have to say. We'll give one minute.
All right, Mohammed Drees.
Evening. This picture of me and the mayor was taken on the 8th of January. And he said this, Mohammed, I know you are going to keep me in line. And that was nine months ago. The day is the 8th. And I will be working hard to keep the mayor in line. Now, he is 49 years old. Nine and four is 13, and they're 13 and you all have. 13 stripes in that flag. There were 13 colonies when we got this country together. And it was for equality for all human beings. I will be working with the mayor to see that all of us get our share. We don't want a piece of the pie to pour.
Time.
We want the whole pie. Thank you.
Anthony Bryant.
How can a, how can a, how can a chronically homeless person with a bowtie and ascot be able to take on the state force to do it? How can a promptly homeless person with a bowtie and ascot take on DOT? How can the mayor say, I'm gonna put promptly homeless people in trailers that you ain't gonna live in and your family ain't gonna live in? Why don't you test it for 90 days and present it that Mayor Cogswell will live in the very same place he promote? I want to see that since you say that to the governor of South Carolina and the marquis over Kalia in 2016, 17, if Kalia, a national organization, Secret Service, region four agency say, Anthony G. Bryant ain't got no physical address. But guess what happened to Anthony G. Bryant if he don't, he don't comply? Force can be used on him, point blank. So I know what's up with this dude. That's the governor.
Hi. Zach Becidi.
Zach Becidi, once again here to support the approval and release of the six pedicab decals. We live in a capitalist country and we encourage and provide opportunities for individuals to start businesses. That's what we do. Unfortunately, this council has taken complete control of that. And there seems like no way other than to appear before you and plead and kind of put out my case. All I would like to do is start my business and all I need. All I would like to do is start my business and all I need you to do is to allow that to happen. It's the only industry that is like that and everywhere else you're allowed to go out and just start your business. Once you are approved, uh once you meet those standards. So I'm just asking for that opportunity. Thank you.
Scott Talent.
Yes, my request was I, I read an article in the paper about a development on Johns Island by the Fernhill Drive. And I live off of Fernhill Drive. It's, the residents and all back there, we're not against the development. Our concern is the stormwater run, which direction are you sending it? Because right now, everything would have to go through private property and mine included if it goes that way. And that's all I was asking, just so we could turn on that development later on, which way the stormwaters run. Thank you.
Joe McGee.
Just want to urge mayor and council to find a, a way to avoid removing the B Lockwood intersection on the Asher River corridor or the Asher River Crossing. That, providing that direct access to the medical district and was a central tenant of the project. There are thousands of workers that are impacted by that. There's a lot of commuters that are impacted by that. Moving to Brittle Bank Park or to the convenience store down the road is pretty much guts at central tenant. So uh consideration on safety are wholly appropriate and applaud those considering future public uh infrastructure improvements. Totally appropriate and applaud those. It shouldn't be an either or decision. So urge your creative redesign of the discussions that you had, I think it was two weeks ago, uh define it, uh define the original intent of the project. Thank you.
Denise Mansheim. Marcus McDonald.
Hello, my name is Marcus McDonald, here to speak on three things, youth, housing, and the racial bias audit at the police department. As you know, black youth poverty is at a high level right now. Many families are facing unspeakable conditions while our rec centers remain under repaired and without the proper funding. The youth clubs and skating rinks that we used to do back in the teenage days are non-existent. And we must act. There's youth out here who need our help. Yes, we have the Gibbs, yes, we have these bigger institutions, but we need to be within our communities and really do something for our youth. City must take action on this regarding housing. I know there's a lot of developers in the room who may not agree with me, but I don't care. Like myself, many young folks live in the city check to check, keep a roof over our head. And that's why I seriously recommend the abolition of the fee and loo policy. So these developers coming into the city actually have to build the affordable housing, have something to wear. And other members of this council have said before around zoning around this fee and loo issue. So I encourage you to do that. And I am very discouraged about how this union peers going. They just handed off to the closest billionaire. I ain't gonna get into that. Y'all got to sleep with the knowing that you made people come to these meetings and then we wasted our time by just giving it to the closest billionaire. Lastly, alright.
Alex Ray.
Good afternoon. Second Sunday in Charleston opens up Lower King Street to the millions of tourists that visit Charleston, providing an exciting walkable environment and providing ample walking space. I would like to suggest that we close off Lower King Street to car traffic, not only on the second Sunday, but both Saturday and Sunday of every weekend. So that every tourist and local visiting downtown Charleston on a weekend can experience that walkable environment and walk without worrying about being hit by cars or traffic. Thank you.
Alright, and we'll go to our online list. And if you are online, you can press star six to unmute yourself. Jerome Harris.
Good afternoon. I want to congratulate the city, in particular, um Charleston Singleton, the project director for uh the Motion Festival. We celebrated his fortieth year this year, extraordinary. I also want to uh raise a question or suggest to the, the mayor and the council. The excellent presentation to the Community Development Committee around the housing goals was wonderful. During that conversation, it was suggested that there would be additional opportunities for the public to interact around that. As you move forward, I would ask that you specifically put that on the calendar uh and broadly communicate that to the community. Thank you.
And those were all the speakers that we had. We did receive um some comments from Mr. Bryant, Mr. Harris, who already spoke this evening. And those were forwarded to council in full, and that's all we have.
Okay, um moving on then to petitions and communications, we have the approval of a mediation settlement agreement. Corporate counsel, corporation counsel is available if council has any questions regarding this. If not, I'll entertain a motion. Uh motion properly seconded for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Now we are on to council communications. Uh I will call on Councilman Gregory, um who has uh requested all four of these. And, and we can put, I think, the initial uh, the question one on the uh screen. If I, I'm happy to give an explanation on that.
Yes.
Where is the other?
Mayor, before, before your explanation, I probably have some questions that you probably can fold in.
Okay.
Okay, um. The first time I saw um the logo to the right was during the weather event. And it was at Amiok. Um and when I first saw it um with the mayor there, I thought it looked great. The only problem is I did not know where I was because of the, the logo that I'd never really seen before, the colors, et cetera. Uh but later on, um I think it was the uh city paper that might have ran an article on our logo versus our official seal. I'm a preservationist, I'm a traditionalist, and I think that we need to protect our brand at all cost. And I'm just not sure how we got to the need to change the brand, particularly a brand that's number one, okay, in the country in terms of travel destination, and I can go on. So I was not sure what the data might have said to our city for us to determine that we need to either rebrand or enhance the existing brand. And I, I think that's sort of where the administration's going with this. However, um I didn't find out about it until I read the paper. And unfortunately, a lot of things that I learned that's going on in our city, I learn about it through the newspaper, particularly on things that I should know about because that generated a lot of questions in my district in terms of where did it come from? Did I have input? Did council have input? And I'm embarrassed to tell them I'd never seen it before, that it had never been shared with me, our council, to even question whether or not rebranding was necessary because I might have argued differently. So my questions, mayor, is one, okay, who authorized the change? Two, who determined that there was a need for us to rebrand? Why do we change a brand that has been working for a very long time? And I'd also like to see, because according to the newspaper and the answers from, to, to the questions that were raised, that that's a placeholder for a much larger approach to rebranding. And again, according to the answers in the paper, that we have hired someone to take this on. I would like an answer to those questions as well as a copy of the contract with whoever we have hired to assist us in this rebranding effort. Again, I was quite embarrassed when asked by my constituents why, and I had to tell them that I'd never seen it before. That's embarrassing. Process and protocols to me are very important. Although I've heard differently that results are more important than process or protocol. That's what I've been told. So my questions, mayor, is just simply who, what, when, where? And at what point would council have been afforded an opportunity to, one, determine whether or not rebranding is necessary? And two, have some input in where we may want to go with it. So that's why I'm bringing this forward because again, I think protocols and process is extremely important because it helps us to get to results. If there was a process and protocols, I wouldn't be having this discussion right now. I'd like for things to be a bit more inclusive, mayor. I'd like for us to be a team, mayor. Cause I am a team player. We all are. Okay? So those are my questions and my issues surrounding um the seal versus the logo.
Dr. May, um well, let me apologize for uh not uh notifying you all about this idea. But I want to be absolutely clear, this is in no way, shape, and form intended to be a rebranding of any sort, of any sort. To change the seal or the identity of the city. I too am a preservationist, a traditionalist, and want to make sure that the seal remains the seal of Charleston, has been for, I mean, you told me how long ago it was, but a long time. The idea behind this was that this seal is lithography. It was literally chiseled into stone and printed on paper. And it's very difficult to implement digitally. And we are doing a lot more now digitally, like a hundred thousand subscribers to our newsletter, like our social media accounts that have become wildly popular. And unfortunately, that doesn't easily translate on the digital. So this is being, and you can see, it's trying to copy the exact face of the middle part of the seal without the um feathers or, and the lamp. And it's being used as a watermark for presentations and, and the like, to be respectful of the city's seal. Period. Full stop. In terms of articles written about me in the paper or written about this, of course, you can't believe everything that you read, right? Everything that's written is not fact. There has never been, and there was never any interview to a paper or journal that we intended on transferring or changing the identity of the city of Charleston. I want to be very clear with that, and if that came across, I'll take full responsibility. But I can't help what people write about in the paper. I've stopped reading. So this is the idea behind this. You see that the city's seal is going to remain on all official documents, stationery, printing materials, uniforms, everywhere you see it now. This, the idea behind it, unless there's any strong objection from the majority of council, will be watermarks for presentations like PowerPoints, will be on the website where it's appropriate and not uh replacing the seal and on other digital content where it shows up a lot cleaner and clear. So that's the idea behind this. There is no additional or contract with any third party to rebrand the city at all. We do have contracts with third-party vendors to help with digital content. But under no circumstances has there been any money given to any third party for rebranding of the city of Charleston or changing the seal or logo. We're still using the same Charleston green color. We are trying to get more consistent across various presentations from various departments because planning and preservation might use a blue background on their uh PowerPoint. And uh stormwater might use a red one. We're trying to just make there some be consistency so that we know it's from the city of Charleston. I think that's a good thing. I think that is enhancing and honoring the brand that is the city of Charleston, not bastardizing. So I apologize. I'll take full responsibility for not letting you all know of this in advance, that we were going to use this uh simplified version of uh, of the seal on parts of our digital content. But if there's strong objection, I'm happy to talk more about it.
I, yeah, I would like, maybe not in this forum, but I'd like to talk um a bit more about it because if any of the quotes, and, and I'm talking quotes from our communication, and I, I know how newspapers are myself. Uh but, but the newspaper clearly quoted one of our staff persons uh to talk about the bigger movement toward rebranding. Now, pick, I don't know if it's fiction or fact, but they did definitely. Um all I'm saying to you is just, is that it was a quote.
Okay, well, they're mistaken.
Okay.
I'm here on the record telling you, rebranding for the city of Charleston is not gonna happen.
So what are we doing?
This is, again, I don't consider this rebranding. We, we can differ in opinion on that, and if the council wants to have a discussion on whether or not that is rebranding, I'm happy to have that discussion.
And I think it is because I've seen many PowerPoint presentations, mayor, okay, with the seal throughout my fifteen years, okay? I've seen tons of PowerPoint. It may not be digitally, may not be color and all that kind of stuff.
It's not.
The point I'm making is, the only point I'm making is that I have seen that seal, okay? In just about every single thing that we do. Now, the argument is that that will never be used officially. For me, okay, if we're, we're in an emergency situation at the MIOK, okay? And all I could see is that, that is official. That is identifying with our city. That go, that, that to, at least to me, and I'm usually the loner, okay? But to me, that is official because that'll be picked up to the weather channel. That'll go nationally, mayor. That is official. So for me, we really need to define official. Now, I know that the, the, the rule talks about to include proclamations, ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. But that wasn't to exclude, okay, other things that the city is doing, like when we. Like when we're at the MEOC and we have behind us, not the city's seal, we have the logo in the most beautiful teal color that I've seen in a while, okay? I'm not saying it didn't look good. The point I'm making is, it just didn't look like us to me.
Fair enough. I'm happy for discussion.
And I'm just saying, I disagree with you that when we do PowerPoints, et cetera, et cetera, that's the seal that's used. I've seen that in gold, beautifully done in gold, okay? So all I'm doing is calling to the attention of this body, okay? Just in case you didn't know, where we are with respect to the seal and the logo. Because if you look at our trucks, if you look at the Charleston Housing Authority trucks, you see the seal. Is that official? I don't know. But the seal is there. So just for consistency, and let's not be confusing things, okay? I think we need to have further discussion, Mayor, on the issue. At least I do.
Floor is open. Floor is open for discussion. Councilman Parker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we clearly, well, not all of us, but some of us definitely. We know that as far as process goes, we have issues in this city. I know we've had them since I've been here. If we're just specifically talking about the branding, I mean, I definitely agree. I mean, we have, this is the second oldest city hall in the United States of America. That has to mean something. I mean, I understand, we can throw the digital element out there. There are very talented graphic artists that could probably make it, tweak our current seal to make it clearer digitally. This does feel like a rebranding, because, I mean, we're city council members. And if we don't recognize it, I'm not sure who else is going to recognize it. You know, we're not a pharmaceutical company, we're not a, you know, I'm not, I just, I think those are very fair questions. What triggered the branding? You explained the digital aspect. But I mean, everybody from these companies, CSX, these companies have a one symbol. For us to have now two logos, I mean, it doesn't really make sense. And again, not to speak, I won't go into depth on process here, because I think that that is a far greater conversation. I would just absolutely be okay with putting on the record that I would object to this, we're not calling it a rebranding, just having a new digital stamp. I think it's confusing. I think we are the city of Charleston. I think the best way to respect that is to keep that current seal and, you know, make it more visually, you know, not appealing, because I think it's wonderfully appealing right now, but visually, you know, that you can read it easier, I guess, if that were, cleaner, thank you.
Yeah, and that was what this attempt is. You want more feathers and you want more of the lamp on there, we can do that.
Again, that's my position to the body. I would prefer that we keep it simple and stick with what we've been doing for 120 years.
Councilwoman Bubba?
I think they're palm bronze. But, you know, unless, unless everybody's, you know, sort of, unless it's run its course, if there needs to be additional discussion, maybe we should take the mayor's suggestion and see if there's like a majority of council that feels that that's necessary. Because I think the explanation is pretty persuasive, frankly.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and colleague. I've been here a long time. And the only seal that I know is the seal to the left. From since I was here, from Mayor Rowley's time and before. I think I'm the, probably the oldest one sitting here, I guess. And the oldest one so far as council is concerned, next to Councilman Seekings. And the only thing that I know of is the seal that we have to the left. My biggest problem is that, and I spoke to some of you all about it, is things coming in the paper before council have a chance to act on it or to even know about it. I have my, that my constituents asked me, from the Zeke Ragsborough to Ellieburg Cannonbar, they said, what the devil is going on? You know what I tell them? I don't know, call the mayor. And that's exactly what I tell them. Because because they put things are happening in the paper, and I'm sitting here on council and don't know anything about it. And that's my, that's my biggest problem, is being transparent, transparency with things that we should be involved in prior to getting in the community. So when someone comes to us and asks us about certain things, we can speak intelligently about it. I couldn't. They said, oh, y'all got two seals? I said, I don't know. I don't know. I really don't know. And I said, the only seal I know is the one over there, Mr. Mayor. And the problem is, I think, we get into a whole lot of bickering or getting into a lot of problem because you see things are bypassing council. Since I was here, we never did that. Everything was come by, we brought to the council before we put it out anywhere. That's the way I learned about it. I learned that from the Municipal Association, from what the council can do, what the mayor is supposed to do from that point. And this is what I'm saying. That's why I always ask my colleague to go out and learn what the role of council is and what the mayor is. I said, you go and pull the page, even on the seat, Mr. Mayor, if you go online and pull and see, look at the classes I have attended. Not just for fun, for education purpose, so I can know exactly what my role is as a council member. We sit here and don't even know. Someone's don't even know what's going on, don't even know the role that we have here, sitting here. And it's a shame. And I sit here looking around, and I'd be sitting around, and they see me smirking, looking around. I said, what the devil is talking about? And Councilman Seek, Councilman Appel knows the way, exactly the way I was when I used to be and looking at everybody's shoes and said, what the devil are they talking about? Where are they going? You see, so this is the things we have to do. We have to be about the business of the city of Charleston. But we as council members here shouldn't know exactly what's going on before it gets out. That's all I'm saying, Mr. Mayor. We need to know it first. Discuss it with us prior and doing it. And I don't think we have to go through none of this, because people are watching us. And they're thinking, right now, they're looking at us now and say, what are the council is doing? They're all over the place.
Again.
We have to stop it.
If I may, if I might, I'll take full responsibility for not conveying the idea of the digital enhancement of the logo here for digital purposes. Fully on me. But I want to be absolutely clear. This was not intended to be a rebranding in the beginning, now, or in the future, okay? If we want to make, if you all want to get involved in the design of that, have at it. I'm all for it. I don't really have much in the way, we need something that works better digitally. It's a modernization. We can pay somebody to graphically design something that would be more reflective of the original seal. You can't use it in a watermark, because it's too busy. But again, this is not something that, if it takes offense, that's certainly not the intent. And in terms of the paper, we've had the discussion on, you know, some of the things that we've been involved with in terms of the day-to-day operations of the city that have gotten out, and you all have expressed concerns to me. We're trying to be very respectful of that and talking with council members on a regular basis to let you know as things are happening, not because you ultimately are going to have the decisions to be made on them, but as the sausage is being cooked, if you will, right? In terms of what the paper writes and when they write it, and they go out and say that we're rebranding, and they quote somebody, I don't know who they quoted, that's, well, again, not a rebranding, it is not intended to be a rebranding. Perhaps there was some problem in that definition. But again, folks, you know, trying to be respectful and have you not read about things like this in the paper, that was certainly not the intent. Any further discussion on this? Councilwoman Waring?
Mayor, let's, obviously, discussion's been had. I agree with the city's seal where it is. So why don't we push this out to the next meeting and we just have a vote up or down? It is mixed messaging, whether it's marketing, rebranding, whatever you call it. And in the day of AI, I just got to believe there's a company out there that can find a way to digitize our original seal.
That's fair. And if we want to do that, I'm fine to do that. The only last point I will make, and I think this is relevant, and we'll bring multiple examples of this, but there are a number of different cities, Boston, New York, that have a digital version in their original seal. So that's, I think, where this came from. But again, if the intent is to stick with no modification whatsoever for the digital versus the official, and that's what council decides in a vote next week, I mean, next council meeting, I'm all for it.
Yeah, let's just do that. We can obviously have discussions in between that time.
Yeah, fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up, any other item? Councilman Parker, Councilwoman Parker?
What was the cost? I think you said a third party did it, but what was the cost?
There was no.
There was no cost. So this was in-house?
Well, I don't know exactly how it was. It was part of a, the web content or social media content contract, which we can get you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, the next is the debriefing on the.
May I just say something about not, about hearing things in the newspaper? And I've heard you say more than once that we'll get better at it, okay? Yesterday, front page, front page of the paper, talking about rapid housing, okay? We know nothing about it, okay? But the paper runs, front page, article, quotes from you, quotes from everybody, okay? So I just think that it's very important for us to be honest with ourselves. There is an issue here with council being caught not knowing what's going on. I don't like it. It's got to get better, Mayor. It really does. Because it's embarrassing that everybody knows what's going on but this body. And quite as it's kept, I'm not the only one that has that concern. I'm the one who put it out there. But many of us have the same concern, because we talk among ourselves about how we're being left out, how the appearance of usurping, and I've said this to you, Mayor, the authority of this body. And that's how it's coming off to me, and I'm very uncomfortable with it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Again, I take exception. We can agree to disagree. The rapid housing, we did discuss in some detail. And the reason for the presentation is we need to figure out if other municipalities and counties are going to engage with us. Because if they're not, it won't happen. Exactly. And I was very clear in my presentation, if you look at it, that my council has to approve any and all decisions here. Budgets included, obviously. Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two quick points. One, I've attended two presentations, one by staff and one by the mayor, on the rapid housing. It's not like that wasn't out there for us to attend, should we wish. But second, I did want to point out, because I was one of the ones that got quoted in the paper, but in looking at it later on, you know, one of the things, my university, I went to Wake Forest, the official seal of the university can only be used on about three things. It's the signet ring, diplomas, and on the dais in the chapel. Otherwise, they have a logo branded element that goes out on other things around the university, on the letterhead, on other stuff like that. So I still think we got to get there a little bit with it. But to think that that's not unusual to keep the seal kind of under wraps as something that you want to preserve and protect on official documents and then use a different type of logo for more kind of out-there, public, unofficial things. It's not something that's not incorporated in other types of bodies. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, I think we had a healthy discussion on this. And let's move on to the next agenda item. We're under Council Communications, again, requested by Councilman Gregory. You would like to make comments here? We have a visual of the org chart? Okay, we can provide that. Well, there's, this is, well, whatever, we have, I'll send you the latest one. There are iterations under planning, for example, that are potentially going to change depending on council's approval of the budget and discussions on potential new hires, for example, in the permit center, to make that process and procedure a lot more efficient for our constituents, because it hasn't been working very well. So we're doing things to try and enhance customer service through the organizational chart. We'll send you all now the current organizational chart. It has not changed. Yeah, we'll get it up, and we will print out a copy and send it, give it to you all before the end of this meeting, so you all have it. I believe it's on the website right now, too. It's been updated there. So glad for you all, glad to recirculate that. There will be potentially some additional modifications. Again, budget permitting, that you all will obviously be involved in during those discussions on the budget approval process. Any further discussion on the org chart?
Might as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I chair HR and I haven't received anything. So you're not missing something that I received that none of y'all wanted. Ms. Copeland, do you think, because I still think, I think these are great items to bring up. Circle back to 2022. I love Council Communications. I'm sure everybody wants to get out of here. Poor guy wants to go to bed over there. I think, do you think Section 217, maybe we need to bring these to HR Committee, these ordinances, and look at those? I mean, I know you've made requests here, but I think we need to get it into committee and have conversations, because I agree with you on process. We didn't agree two years ago. We agree, I agree on process, always have. And I think there's a clear area that the body and the mayor's administration, I think everyone here needs to be clear, I will, I'll disagree with you slightly, that we do as a body, I mean, we work as a body, all 13 of us, and then we obviously have the executive, you know, he's the executive of the city. But if any other council member doesn't feel this way about process, then we are, listen, you know I'm the queen of the lonely hat, so, but if everybody else feels that it's acceptable because they want their sidewalks in their district, then this is the process that's going to continue. I saw it with the previous administration. I'm seeing it now. So unless everybody else agrees, we might need to sit on our hands and let it be. So that's just me. I would request that Section 217, section, I don't know if I need to make a motion, but that 215, 216, getting on to the number, item three, I don't know if that's happening today or is that going to go to committee?
I can speak to that.
All right, well, I'm also just asking you, if I can finish, should we send ordinance section, I mean, section, Article 2, Section 216 to 17? And I can't find the other one, but should we send those to Human Resources for further discussion?
Could you, for the benefit of council and the record, can you give some brief explanation as to what those sections reference?
Yeah, actually, I will just add it to the committee. How about that? But I just didn't know, since Ms. Copeland, I know with our new rules, since it's not a new ordinance, it doesn't need to go through Council Communications first. We can just review the ordinance in committee?
You can add a discussion item to your committee at any time, and 2-17, do you want me to just?
Okay, I'll add it to committee.
2-17 is powers, A is all powers of the city are vested in city council. So it's subsection A and B both talk about what city council is authorized to do. So that is the section.
And thank you for that follow-up, and my point being that as far as the org chart, sorry, circling back to why I mentioned it due to the org chart, is, you know, city council does have some authority as far as municipal departments, offices, and agencies. So I do think if that, if we look at the org chart in HR, and if city council has questions about organizational areas of certain departments, I think that that's a great place to have the discussion. I don't know how you feel about that. I know you used to chair HR, but I'm open to that because in the past, I do think that there are areas that can improve. Now, how far city council can, is allowed to have involvement with that is still sort of yet to be determined, but I'm happy to put it on the HR committee.
If I may, chart is up, right?
Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, all powers lie in council, all powers. What's at the top of the chart? Is that the mayor at the top?
City of Charleston.
That's City of Charleston? Okay, so underneath that, what do we have?
You have mayor, clerk of council, city council.
Okay, and where you and I would differ on that, and I think I mentioned that to you and I one-on-one, the administration has a reporting requirement to this body. The administration, okay, reports to council, okay? Based upon my read of the municipal association, because it's clear that the mayor has a report on all the functions of the departments to council and above council, the citizens. So I can send some recommendations forward. And for me, that's why it's very important on item three that we get the municipal association in here. Because I see confusion, I really do, Mayor. I see confusion, and not because of the chart, but because of how things are being operated.
I think the operations.
And what I mean by that, okay, is bypassing council and going to the media. Okay, and let me just finish, and I'll give you the floor, because I've been told, I've been told, Mayor, process is not important, results are.
I disagree.
Oh, I know you do, okay, but your staff apparently doesn't.
I disagree with that.
Okay, no, 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 Mayor, I'm just telling you, okay? With your chief of staff standing right next to me, okay? Your staff person told me clearly, okay? Things having to go to council before they come to, things should go to the the standing committee and then to the body of the whole. Your staff told me that's not important. What is important, Mayor, are results. So I think you might want to have a conversation with your staff, and that can be verified by your chief of staff, who was standing there when the conversation was going on. And I found that insulting that a staff member is going to come to council who technically he reports to through you, okay, and say such a thing. Totally inappropriate to say it's okay to bypass the process. I'm saying to you, I know you feel that way, but I'm just saying you need to get your staff together.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, any further commentary on this subject matter? Okay, Councilman Mitchell?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have much to say, but I've been saying the same thing, that council is here and things should come through council, just saying before it gets out. That's just my pet peeve on that. Let council discuss it before it gets out in the community. So we can all be together on one page, because we are not.
It is, it is an absolutely legitimate point.
And that's what I'm saying.
Some council members, if I may, seem to have, want to have more information and more involvement, and others don't.
But what.
So we'll try and balance between who wants what.
See, the balance is that it should come here, the council, to the standing committee. That's what it.
Agreed. There's a process, there's an absolute process that's defined.
This is the process with so far as the municipal association is saying. That's why I said I went and learned, not just yesterday. You got to learn these things, learn your role as a council member, and the mayor has his role too. That's all I'm saying. Let's follow, we wouldn't have all this conversation going on because we'd be following that rules and the things can go thus smoothly. We have a little ups and downs, but it goes smoothly, and that's my problem, even with the, we talked about the rapid housing. I'm getting all beat up in this community because I didn't know anything about, I represent all those areas. All those things are coming in the district that I represent. You all still know what I'd be going through with the community because they're coming to me. Councilman, what's going on? What you doing this? How you about? I don't know anything about it. And if they're telling you in the community, what I'll tell them, call the mayor. I don't know. I'm just seeing it and reading it in the paper, I see it on television. That's not the way it should be operating. That's all I'm saying. That, all I'm saying is let's be transparent. Let's have things coming to council, even as for discussion, before it's out there. I remember one time, Mr. Mayor, you said, do not put things out right now because we don't want to get out. When I look at it, it's all in the paper. You said, don't let it, go put it out now, because we haven't discussed this and get it out yet. But then I look again in the paper, here it goes, oh, we doing this, I said, what the devil is going on? And I'm getting these calls because it's all in this pick that I represent, and I'm out there. I'm out there. Maybe I need to stop being out there, it's too much, but I'm out there more so than most of my colleagues. You come and catch me out there 1:00 and 1:30 in the morning. That's why I'm out there. I'm a community person, period. I ain't got nothing to do with all this big talk and big stuff. I'm all about community, always was, all my life was, community. And that's why I work with community. Councilman Seekers, welcome down to King Street. I let him have that. I just thought, you know, it's, but it's all about community. And so if we do these things and bringing these things to council like it should, usual standing committee. And Mr. Mayor knows, every time someone called me to be on the, I'm there. If I'm not the chairman, I'm the vice chair, and I'm there. I try to do what's right, and that's the way I try to live, do what's right. And you don't have the problems, the biggest problem. You may have some pickup sometime, but do what's right and proper, and we can go through and be smooth. Because things are getting all crazy up here now, and I just, it just don't seem right to me. Mr. Mayor, it just don't seem right. So I feel if things are coming to council like it should, even with the standing committees that's there that should go through, then we put it out, everybody's on the same page. Even if you don't agree with it, but you're on the same page. That's all I'm saying.
So we should go to item four, Mayor?
I'm sorry?
I wish you go to item four now?
Not yet. Yeah. Councilman Appel?
I've held back this long. State law sets up a very general, basic framework for the different forms of government. The council mayor form of government that we have is the same exact form of government that the mayor council form of government is the same exact form of government Town of Kiowa has. I've represented the Town of Kiowa now for several years. And let me just say, the way the Town of Kiowa operates is very different than the way the City of Charleston operates and has operated since the Joe Riley administration. My point is, is that that just says that the state framework, the legislative framework, when you look at the state code, sets just a very general framework and leaves a lot of the details in terms of implementation to be worked out at the local level, because Kiowa and the City of Charleston have about one thing in common, and that they're located in the state of South Carolina. They're very different places. They're very different places. So, you know, 2-17, I mean, is the powers of council. As you will note, it's a very thinly drafted section. It talks about the powers of council, you know, it's essentially two paragraphs. It's very, it's very broad. It does say that all power is vested in city council, no question about it. That's what state law provides. That's what our ordinances provide. But council, in its wisdom, back in 1975, adopted Section 2-96, which is entitled Power and Duties of the Mayor. And if you look at that section, it's got nine enumerated subsections under the mayor's general powers, and it's extremely broadly worded. And that is consistent with, you know what else happened in 1975? Look over there, who got into office in 1975 and ran this city for a very long time, is, you know, what I would describe as a strong mayor form of government, I think most people would say pretty well overall. And so what I'm saying is, is council has already acted on this issue. Our predecessors back, you know, in the mid-'70s passed an ordinance that delegated an enormous amount of power to the mayor. A lot of those details have not been fleshed out in the code because it's such a complicated thing. It can't, you can't envision every single process and every single department and everything like that. So I just wanted to point that out. So certainly, one administration versus a new administration may have different philosophies or interpretations of some of this very general language in Section 2-96. And, you know, I think that's something else that's going on here. In terms of communication, I think we all agree communication's important. I think the mayor's acknowledged that. Just also keep in mind, under FOIA, if we are all going to be looped into communication, that has to be done at a meeting, technically, unless you want to have separate conversations with everybody, or subquarums and things of that nature. These are part-time jobs. The mayor and his team and his staff are here every day. This idea that we're going to be looped in at every moment, on every discussion and everything that happens, I think is just, you know, impractical, both from a coordination standpoint, but also from a legal standpoint, when you talk about FOIA and what all that requires. Obviously, communication's important. We do need to be looped in on things. But I just wanted to point out some of those technical issues as we have these further discussions. I mean, I think the City of Charleston, I think any large municipality needs to be run by an executive that's a full-time person. These are part-time positions that we have here at city council, technically. I know people, I know people, different people approach the job differently. And what works for one person in one district may not work for others in other districts, and that is part of the flexibility that's built into our system. But technically, we don't show up at an office every day at 8:00 and leave at 5:30 or whatever. It's not like that. There are examples of local governments around the region that do not have a strong executive. They have nine mini-mayors. And you can look at the way those operations are run, and I think there's some fair critiques about how that operates. So I think, you know, Carl will know which founding fathers said, you know, something about there's no form of government that's perfect, but this is the best of the worst ones. It's an important. Churchill, okay, sorry about that, but you know, bottom line, council has already delegated the mayor an extraordinary amount of power. We talked about the value and importance of tradition and conservatism in this city in terms of how we respect our institutions. This is the system that we've been running for a long, long time. You know, I think there needs to be a demonstrated need for changing process. Just throwing around the word process is not an argument. It's really a contentless thing to say. I don't think the city needs, I don't think the city council needs to be involved in every decision. If city council had to be involved in every decision, Sumar Street would have never happened. Full stop. Full stop. There's no way that would have happened if we were, we had to be involved in every twist and turn, in every single dynamic that had to take place in that situation. So I think it's important to be able to have a strong executive. I think it's important for us to be in the loop and be communicated with. But at the same time, we have to also recognize the realities of what management of a large, complicated city looks like. And those are just my comments for today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Appel. Councilman Appel, any further comments on this? Or we'll move to number four on the agenda item, Councilwoman Parker?
And, and, I'm sorry.
Very aware what process means. I think it's okay for all of us. We understand the word. You know what it means. I've talked about it again two years ago. We talked about this a lot, process. A lot of things happened in the city two years ago. Y'all don't even remember voting on them, because you didn't. Because all the power lied with the mayor. I'll say process again, it is important, and that's why I think a deeper discussion needs to be had in committee about process. And if there's something that this body wants to change, then we can do it. I don't think this body wants that, but we can absolutely have the discussion.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Gregory?
Yeah. The law is the law. And I agree with some of what you said, but a lot of it I really will agree to disagree. And I do agree that you need a strong executive to run a city, but that executive can also be a city manager. And I think you used your words very carefully, because there is a form of government where the city manager runs the city. And I do think that it's very important that we get, okay, the municipal association in here, because just listening leads me to believe that we need them, and we need them badly. Because what I see, our city's form is almost a hybrid. Okay, it's a hybrid, at least to me. And at some point, I'll have further discussion with the mayor directly on what I'm talking about, but I see a hybrid. And I really think we need the municipal association in here so that we can get our questions answered by them. Number four, Mayor, was an update on the Haged Avenue study.
I'll get the agenda. Any other further comments related to the Section 1, 2, or 3? Okay, we'll move on to Section 4. Morgan, come up and give a presentation.
May I? I mean.
Yeah, this is your agenda item, so I thought you asked for her to give the presentation.
I did, but can I say something before she comes up and gives it? Because Haged Avenue, as you know, is in my district. And I did forward a copy of the Haged Study to all council members so that they can have some background information. Because I thought that the study was one of the most thorough studies of the area that I've seen, Mayor, because it makes Haged Avenue the centerpiece of the total redevelopment of that area. Finally, under the consolidation of districts, all of it's now in District 6. And I think I came to you September 12th with the request that we start working on the Haged Study. And if I'm not mistaken, we have some money set aside as a city, along with some of our partners, like the Citadel, the Medical University, and others, where we agreed that we put money together so that we can take the Haged Avenue Study much further. So it's very important for me that we get on top of this, because constituents in my district for many years, at the corner of Haged in Fishburne, it's impassable. Folks can't get to the Citadel. They can't get to, uh, the Medical University, and many of them can't get to their homes. So, mayor, again, thank you, um, and, 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 and Morgan, I really appreciate you with all the work that the, uh, Design Division has done on this. Uh, I think it's admirable, and I think it gets us to a place where we can start working on the next step. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so thanks, Councilmember Gregory. I think you did a great job of explaining to us why, skipped ahead a little bit, why Haged is important to study. So in addition to the flooding and the roadway being impassable, some of the things that we can see every day, there is also all of the flooding that happens from tidal and storm events due to ground elevation. The street grid gets disconnected. There's safety issues, the quality of the roadway significantly impacted by urban heat. Much of the area is built over a former landfill. And there's this great opportunity for new development, but the risk of displacement associated with that. And then Gadsden Creek, the tidal creek. Our directive was to find a streetscape solution for Haged Avenue by studying the surrounding area and making a plan for how to start. So this is the context area that we looked at. It's now all in your district council member. Uh, we can see the Ashley River on the left side of the screen, all the way up just past President on the top of the screen, covering down part of the Medical District, towards the bottom right of the screen, towards B Street, going all the way up to the Citadel campus. In order to design Haged right, to get the street design right, you really need to look at it from this scale, to look at it from the district approach. So we first had, one of the first things that we did was hold a workshop where we invited internal and external partners that had an active or planned project that was happening in the study area. All of these efforts were happening individually or separately at that time, and one of our big goals was to get everybody on the same page. And we were particularly interested in projects that addressed to these themes. Water, mobility, safety and access, the tree canopy and urban heat risk, and then the idea of development and displacement. These are the projects that ended up being addressed in the report, and many of them were covered with a formal presentation during that workshop, and the rest were covered through conversations or other meetings. We were interested in the timeline for each of these efforts, the extent of these projects, and what the results would be if they continued as planned. And I think this is a good reflection of how complex the area is with all of these projects going on. Not all of these are led by the city. There's some other organizations represented. So the report ended up being a summary of the workshop conversations, initial analysis, and our design recommendations. So these are some of the analysis maps, covering tree canopy, hydrology and elevation, the extent of the landfill, which proved pretty tricky to map, but I think we got a good estimate. Circulation grid network, and all of these reflect those initial themes as well. The specific recommendations that are included in the report all relate to Haged Avenue, the roadway specifically. This is a street section that shows the addition of bike lanes, road elevation, tree planting, and where the water will be. So it's not on the road, next to the road. And a street-level view of what Haged Avenue could look like. This is a bit atypical for the peninsula. We can see that there's a pretty generous setback of the building off of the roads, but that area could be a really cool, really ecological place. We can see what the water on both sides. It could be a park, a natural feature. It doesn't, just because it's different, doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be something that's bad. And then our next step is a meeting next week, um, October fifteenth, where we, we will be kind of reopening the report, looking at some of the recommendations and making a plan forward.
Councilman Gregory?
Because within the report, um, there were some next steps. And could you explain to us, yeah, could you explain to us what those steps are? Because if I'm not mistaken, uh, one of those steps was to start, um, uh, developing an advisory, neighborhood advisory group, also establishing, um, a technical advisory group, and to also start thinking about design work. And, and in that regard, um, we get there, uh, through hopefully a grant. We talked about a grant, and I think we missed the window for the grant. Will there be another opportunity?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay, and can you talk about what that grant is just, just quickly?
We have a couple of different options for a grant. Um, there's DOT grants that are appropriate. There's an EPA grant that's appropriate. It really depends on if we, the, the option that you laid out earlier, we fund the technical study through kind of contributions from the city and other groups first, and then go to a grant process for a capital project, or if we go directly to a grant process for that planning study. So I think that's one of the first big decisions that we'll need to make, how that initial technical plan is funded. So that, that'll impact the timeline and what grants we're able to apply to.
And, and do we have a sense of what that might cost, the next step?
We had estimated that the technical plan, two hundred and fifty thousand, but that is an estimate.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking is if I'm not mistaken, um, uh, and I, I think we can ask our CFO that I think we did do a set aside, the city did, and I think the other partners did too.
And just for clarity, the original, uh, plan was presented in April of twenty-three. So this would have been a set aside in the twenty-three budget.
We, we're not, yes, yes, I mean, because we're, we're like eighteen months since the April twenty-third completion of the study. Eighteen months.
Right.
So we have, um, we do have general fund reserves. We have general fund reserves set aside, um, for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we've had set aside.
Hundred and twenty thousand. And I, and I guess if, if you're saying two fifty, we need to check with the other to see whether or not they set aside similar amounts so that we can move forward. I mean, mayor and council, this is something in my district. I mean, it's a dire need, mayor, as you know, in my district, and it's been for a while. So that's why I'm putting this kind of energy in it, uh, and looking forward to the meeting on the fifteenth. And I'm not sure that meeting, will that meeting have any of our partners at the meeting, or will it just simply be?
The fifteenth meeting will be internal.
Just internal. Okay, and I don't, I'm just being very clear here, okay? We'll talk.
If you could go back to the previous slide, I just want to give, give a point of clarification back, 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 all right. I did want to just maybe make a recommendation, given the complexity of this and the process that we, uh, do deem important and I respect. It might be beneficial to take this to community development, uh, before coming back to, uh, city council so that it can work out a lot of these details, because it's very complicated. And one of the things I want to point out is number nine, and I'm curious, the, the perimeter protection or the battery extension is not contemplated, is not being brought in to this initial study.
So the, I think it really depends on what, where that goes. It has changed a lot, battery, battery extension now. We were initially debating it on, we announced on the edge.
Right, so I make the point because what you might design there will dramatically change depending on the alignment. So, I mean, if it's council's, uh, objective with our partners to spend potentially two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a design without knowledge of where the perimeter protection might go, which we've just funded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for. You know, there's a little bit of cart before the horse. This is a critical, critical piece of infrastructure that has been long neglected. But there are other extenuating circumstances and other projects that are substantial in nature that tie into it. So I think it's important to just work through all those details, and I think the appropriate place to do that, to work through all the details, would be community development.
Mayor, I mean, I think also public, public works.
Sure.
I mean, I mean, and traffic and transportation. I mean, if you look at all the folks in our city that, uh, uh, worked with the design center, that pulled this together, I think that we didn't just pull them back together, the city folks who worked on it before, instead of reinventing the wheel. And it included community development, stormwater, um, it included all areas of the city, parks and recreation. So, so to me, I, I just, mayor, I just don't want you, one of the things you talked about when you were running about plans, and they're sitting on shelves, okay, getting dust. This has been on the shelf for eighteen months already, spanning two administrations. Okay, so for me,
Eighteen months of which I've only been in office nine.
Well, I'm saying, I say both administrations. I, it's like, you know, I give you your credit. But the, the point I'm making is, I think it's time for us to get off the dime, and I understand about the perimeter protection issue. But I think there's a lot in there, and, and the plan talks about. There are things that we can do individually, but there are things that should be done in tandem. Am I correct in reading the study?
Yes, there is a timeline like that.
Okay, so, so I don't want to start holding things up, okay, for number nine. Understand it's going to have to be worked in in time, but there's so much more in there, mayor, that I think that we could start working on now.
Any further discussion, uh, Councilman Waring?
Yeah, I do. Um, Ms. Wharton, can you come back to the microphone? When we set aside, it was maybe a month ago, a year ago, when we set aside that hundred and thirty thousand or whatever, a hundred and twenty thousand, you know, with the partners. Obviously, this all involved Gadsden Creek. I got subpoenaed to go and testify in front of the administrative law judge. I was the lucky one. And one of the, because I, I was for keeping the creek open. Because West Edge had a, had a, uh, water quality study done, and it showed contaminants was leaching from this formerly city-owned dump. And I thought, well, maybe West Edge wasn't as objective. So let's, I proposed getting our own study, independent study, and guess what? Study came back pretty much, and it was a different company, same as what, uh, West Edge Water Quality Study came back with. Well, one of the problems with that is doing the King Tides, as we all know, Haged floods to the point to where our full-size trucks cannot get through. As a matter of fact, our, one thing left out was our police department can't get through. And that contaminated water goes over into gas and green, uh, housing development. And you literally have children playing in contaminated water. I testified to that fact in the court. It's actually part of the order. So when the allies to the process were pulled together, um, obviously the city, uh, West Edge, Medical University, the Citadel, and the Housing Authority, the appropriations of those dollars were supposed to expedite that study being done. And all, as I understood, all the partners committed to their share of the monies. So raising Haged Avenue, and I believe in longer-term plans, Haged Avenue is supposed to come across Spring Street and eventually tie into B Street?
Love that. I don't think, I don't think the DOT loves that.
They, they may not like that, but I've seen that drawing before. But obviously, uh, uh, being flooded on the water doesn't make sense, so, uh, the, the wall, I gotta tell you, if that perimeter wall comes all the way to, um, Haged Avenue, so you mean to tell me everything in front of that's gonna be on the water side of the wall? Uh, perimeter protection?
The, the perimeter protection and the alignment's to be defined, but it would come up Brittle Bank, and it would prevent the flooding that comes in through Gadsden Creek. If Gadsden Creek isn't already filled, which is another complication of this site that's being contemplated and is still subject to a ruling from the Supreme Court. So again, just in terms of planning things and spending money towards design, I'm all for it. If we want to move forward, uh, we just need to be cognizant. There could be other extenuating circumstances, pretty big ones, that could impact this.
Well, Haged Avenue is sinking because it's in the, in the landfill, so that's, that's the big problem, right? That's the problem with it. And by getting that study, uh, completed, the goal was to go to Washington and try to get some infrastructure money from the infrastructure bill that had already been passed and not appropriated, to obviously come back with a comprehensive fix. So I just want to kind of put, uh, a cap on the strategy behind, uh, having the study, because how much money were we going to ask for and why, and from what sources? Without the study, we wouldn't be in a position to even ask that. So, uh, as far as Haged Avenue, Haged Avenue is obviously an artery that we're not going to do away with. We still need Haged Avenue. Okay, so, anyway, so I'm looking for, but to have a, a meeting, at what point in time are we going to pull the stakeholders, you know, from West Edge? When I say West Edge, I slash M-U-S-C, the Citadel, the Housing Authority, into, I guess, a meeting for this. I understand we're going to be meeting with staff, and that's all important, but the stakeholders' input, when we do come, go to Washington to make that request, I'd certainly like to have a chorus behind us as opposed to doing a solo.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, um, the pedestrian bridge is there, isn't it, somewhere in there, right?
Uh, the R, yeah, okay, okay. It's not part of the contemplated.
Okay, um, but the floating dock, okay, um, along Brittle Bank, okay? The perimeter protection is going to go beyond that floating dock, am I correct? I think in our discussion, that's how you explained it to me.
No.
Okay, then how did you explain it? You said yes?
The floating dock, the perimeter protection will actually be at the bridge. It's smart to go that on landside because of the, uh, the earthen, uh, ramps for the bridge themselves get you to the elevation. So the infrastructure for, uh, perimeter protection at the bridge will actually be on the land. And the floating dock will serve as, uh, so you don't have to rip it out and rebuild something. The idea is to try and do something that, um, is more permanent, not temporary.
I'm just
But again, the alignment is
Totally confused now.
To be determined. We're working on that. We just awarded the contract, this meeting or last meeting.
Okay, I just, I'm just trying to make sure that when we, we talk about, um, uh, the perim, no, the, uh, battery extension, right? That, um, uh, we don't use that, uh, as a basis to do nothing. Because I think that's a long way down the pike. And right now, uh, the citizens in my district, as well as the Medical University, the Citadel, the College of Charleston, uh, our police department, I can go on and on, needs relief now. And I would agree with you, mayor, again, we don't want to do a temporary fix either. We want to do something that's going to last a while. But I don't want us to get stuck in a meeting, an internal meeting, okay? To discuss the issue, it never gets out of there, and it just sits when we've already had, um, an extensive meeting with the partners, who wants to move forward? I just don't want the city to be the one to hold this back, mayor. That's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough. Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this a city road, state road, just for clarification?
State road.
It's a state road. Whose district is this in?
Gregory.
No, 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 statewide. Councilmember Mitchell?
You, you mean, what, what state representative or senator?
Correct.
I believe it's Deion Tatter, uh, is the senator, and Wendell Gilliard is the, uh, House member.
Okay, we do have Representative Gilliard on staff, do we not?
We do.
So we should maybe work on that all together, right?
Councilmember, can you use your microphone?
I think we talk about it. The, the city, um, get it requesting to own Haged, am I correct? Did I read something in, in there?
It's a big step, but it was discussed.
It was discussed, right, okay. But we need the state money, like, state road.
Councilwoman Parker, I mean, uh, sorry, Waring?
I know we look alike, right? No, I just wanted to follow up. It seems like a minor point, but what I mean, it was one thing when the city didn't know the landfill No, I just wanted to follow up, it seems like a minor point, but what I mean, it was one thing when the city didn't know the landfill was leaching contaminants. But now we do, and that aspect about, it's not a minor point, that we knowingly have kids playing in contaminated water. So anyway, there's, there's an urgency to move forward.
Okay, any other questions related to this topic? If not, we'll move on to, uh, consent agenda items, there are two committee reports under consent. Uh, these do not need any approval, I do want to just make a point, um, uh, that the Ashley River Crossing project, uh, and, and options for that for council to review, um, will be, uh, presented at, uh, ten twenty-two meeting. And both options, one is the original option, the other option, as it's currently contemplated, uh, are being proposed for council discussion, does include access to, uh, uh, Lockwood. So, I think that's been a commentary that has been talked about in the paper, uh, but not interviewed me, uh, a couple of times. So just want to let you all know that both iterations being proposed, but again, for open for discussion, uh, include access to, uh, Lockwood. Okay.
Mayor.
Yep, you have two committee, yeah, Councilman.
Back, back to two A crossing. Um, I know that we have some other iterations, um, additions, but I think what we need to work with is, were council approved? Didn't council approve the plan? For the bridge, design and everything else?
Been a part and parcel of many different things, there still isn't even completely a final design. What we approved was the project itself, and then, you remember, we were challenged by, um, the administration back then to go find the money to actually go build something, we'd get across the river and connect West Ashley to downtown and the Medical University, so, I mean, that was our charge, for sure.
Yeah, there's no final design. So, we'll, we'll present what was being proposed, and then a potential alternative that can either be discarded, amended, modified, um, Councilwoman Parker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has the price ballooned again? I don't want to believe everything I read in the paper, but has the price ballooned again?
Price has not changed, there's been no change order signed whatsoever.
None, but from, from initial, yes, it has.
Oh, no, I mean, I know from initial, I think we started at fourteen and we're at eighty?
Like that.
Yeah.
More than eighty, but.
Eighteen.
Well.
Councilman Seekings.
To be clear, yes, the price tag has gone up, that hasn't been as a result of.
City.
That's, that's correct, I mean, we, we went to the state, we asked them to help us financially, and the agreement was they would do so so long as we met some of their requirements, which included, it was unlimited to, and mercifully, thank you, they did it. It was gonna be a full-blown project, no road diet, no, um, value engineering, that it would be a full-blown project that we all, state, county, city, and all the people who live in any of those jurisdictions would and could be proud of. And the project now, as it stands, without the Riverwalk, is eighty-two million dollars, of which the city's, um, portion of that is nine, right? So we are getting an eighty-two million dollar project for city dollars of nine million, and just so, Councilmember Greg, I want to make sure we're on the same page on this. It was contemplated, and from my perspective still is, that it would be, among other things, a way to commute from West Ashley into population centers, including the Medical University, hence the conversation we've had. And I take it, the presentation of a couple of different options, because it, it, if you go and ask the design and construction team, the land side on the Charleston end is not finally and complete, because it's kind of three projects in one. You got the West Ashley on offside, you got the bridge itself, and then how it attaches, how it configures, how it works safely and efficiently on the Charleston side is still something that needs to be talked about, and it should not, it shouldn't increase the budget at all. I mean, as it stands right now, we've actually backed off the budget a little bit, so.
Right, as discussed, it was a perfect example of not, uh, moving forward with a final design on something that wouldn't contemplate the elevation of the Army Corps Initiative, which would have required us to spend probably at least twenty million dollars retrofitting it. Uh, however long you say it's long down the road, I hope it's only five to seven years down the road, but that would be a little bit of an embarrassment to have done that. So I think this will be a good discussion at the committee meeting, uh, next week, or council meeting on the twenty-second. Um, and we'll, happy to bring the, the aggregate sources and uses, uh, as defined currently.
Yeah, okay, I mean.
Uh, okay.
It is, I mean, that, this project's a go, I mean, it's, there's a contract signed.
Yeah, they're breaking ground.
It's starting, yeah.
Um, the only, the only nuance to that right now is that the, uh, current contractor, uh, design-build contractor is looking for a, um, uh, an assignment, because they have either been acquired or, uh, but we're working through with our attorneys on that, because there's some language in that that's pretty important, this is A B C, a very big contract. Uh, so we have retained, uh, third-party counsel to make sure that we are, city is properly represented, um, because these projects can be hit with pretty substantial, um, uh, change orders. So we need to make sure that doesn't happen. Anyway, okay, um, we've covered, uh, any, anything else on those two committee reports? Before we move on to, uh, our consent agenda items, before we move on to committee reports? If not, uh, I'd like to call on, um, Councilmember Shealy, uh, to go over the Committee on Public Safety.
Thank you, Mayor Cogswell, uh, Committee, um, Public Safety met Wednesday, September eighteenth, so almost three weeks ago. Um, we had four grants approved, that none of them had a match, however, one, this is all for the police department, all four. Um, however, one of them's a little bit different, so that was to accept the FY twenty-five supplemental allocation for victim services grant, amendment thirty-four thousand, three thirty-three. That grant is gonna fund training and salary infringed for the elder advocate position, um, in the CPD Family Violence Unit. The granting agency waived the twenty percent match, however, that amount awarded, um, that funding will not cover the full cost of the position, and approving the award also approves that the difference will be included in the twenty-twenty-five budget. So all four grants were unanimously approved on there. We also had, uh, three approvals for the Stop Violence Task Force. Um, one with the, uh, United States Attorney's Office, um, a participation agreement with We Are Their Voices, and a participation agreement with Medical University, uh, Hospital Authority. So all three of those were unanimously approved as well. Uh, we also had the introduction of Stephen Davis, who's the, uh, our new emergency manager as well. Um, we had an update from Mayor Cogswell, uh, talking about our fire training facility update, saying that we're negotiating a purchase and sale agreement, and trying to come to terms with what actually can be built on that property as well. So, that's the conclusion of my report, but I do, I would like to make a motion to approve that, please.
Motion, uh, to approve and seconded, all those in favor, any discussion? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Uh, now, I'd like to call on Councilmember Mitchell for his Community Development Report. Motion to approve with property second, any further discussion on this?
Councilmember.
Councilman Gregory, please use the microphone.
I guess what I should say is, uh, anything summar, um, is, uh, abstained.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on this item? Okay, we have, uh, motion property seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, we have two abstentions, okay?
On the Sumar Street item.
On the Sumar Street item only, correct?
Yes.
Items, is there one, just one, there's two.
Yes.
Um, three, actually. Uh, I'd like to call on Councilwoman Parker to, uh, for her committee report on H R.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we accept the report, I believe we already voted, do we need to vote again on three B one, Madam Clerk, if we already?
It's already been approved.
Okay, so I just moved to adopt the report.
Motion, probably seconded, any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, signify, uh, Councilman Mitchell? Uh, we have one abstention, uh, so, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, eyes have it with one extension, uh, abstention. Committee on Public Works, Call on, uh, we have a motion for approval on the committee report for, uh, Public Works. As amended, we have a second. Uh, we have a motion property seconded, any further discussion on this item? As amended, if not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, eyes have it, now I'd like to call on Councilwoman Mitchell for, uh, his, um, uh, uh, Community Development Report.
Can you use your microphone, Councilmember?
Thought I had it on. We had a presentation and consideration of the Charleston Housing Goals by the Bloomberg Association. So, uh, what we did, the committee just voted to accept that presentation as a draft. And then, uh, so we just let, you know, be coming back at a later date, but it'll be accepted as a draft. And on, uh, then we had, uh, executive session pertaining to union pair, but no action was taken. So I'm with the approval of, uh, the report coming from Community Development.
Okay, uh, we have motion, we have second. Uh, motion property seconded, uh, and just for clarity, um, the committee voted to accept the concept presented as a draft. There will be amendments, changes to that, what was presented is not final. Just wanted to make that point clear for the record, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, now Committee on Special Facilities.
Mr. Mayor, before, can, can we make sure that we all get a copy of what was presented at that, that meeting, the concept draft? Because we really didn't get a copy of it.
Sure, uh, Chairman, we'll, uh, make sure that you get that, you can distribute it to the council members, does that work?
All access staff. So we.
Um, uh, Committee on, uh, I'd like to call on Councilman Brady for his report on special facilities.
Yep, I was unable to attend that meeting, so.
Sorry.
Vice Chairman Mitchell was able to chair it in my absence.
Uh, who?
Oh. Yeah, on, uh, October third, uh, at four o'clock, we had a special facility meeting. The only thing we had, an update by remain here with, of, uh, special facilities, and number B, we had a naming of the Dock Street Theater rehearsal hall in honor of, uh, D F, Nelson Alto. And that's the only two items that we had, and both of them was approved. We approved that, so.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a motion? Uh, we have motion property seconded by Councilman Gregory, uh, no further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, eyes have it, now a call on Councilman Waring for his report on Public Works.
Move for approval as amended.
Move for, motion approved and seconded, uh, as amended, all those in favor, signify.
Just really quickly, that amendment would include the two added items.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Does include the two added, good point, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Uh, now we are on to.
Ways and Means.
Ways and Means.
As amended, please, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk, with the three.
We have a motion as amended with additional items, um.
Three, uh, three added.
Three items.
Three items.
Um, is it three or four?
It was four.
Parts two.
Right, one, three added items, or two, one.
One forty-one Meeting Street, the OP Center, and then the mutual aid agreement with Henderson, North Carolina.
Okay, so we have a motion property seconded, all those in favor, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Mr. Mayor, that includes the first readings of the ordinances listed on the agenda, and it includes the deferral of the property on Folly Road. That was.
Yes.
Pre-annexation, that was deferred at the request of the applicant.
Okay, we are now on to, uh, bills up for second readings, there are nine bills up for second reading. Um, M seven is as amended, have a motion.
Move for approval, second.
Yeah, we have a motion to take them all together with, uh, M seven as amended.
Cause that's amended.
Second.
Who's the second?
Uh, Brady.
And.
Uh, all those in favor, by, Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want, I bel- I just want to be clear again, M two, um. All right, we are creating, I like the project, I said this in committee, I like the project. We are amending an ordinance to allow for zoning changes to happen without public input, correct? At a staff-level decision, I know there's a project that was discussed at Community Development, I just want to be.
Conversion of a motel that was, is being contemplated for, um, uh, affordable housing.
Correct, and the discussion was, should this be staff-level, should these be staff-level decisions? So to, so as not to politicize them and make them public, and have public hearings surrounding the zoning change that may or may, that may or may be presented, so is this, is this what we're doing? We will, we will allow this, they will not have to come to council, public hearing, to move forward, to move forward with this project.
It is correct, they would not have to come to council for a public hearing. They do have a requirement for neighborhood meetings, two neighborhood meetings, as per the ordinance. So meeting with the most immediately affected nearby neighbors, to let them understand what the conversion would mean. Uh, but otherwise, it would not have, uh, council approval, no doubt.
Okay, I just, I want to make that very clear to the public, that that's what we're doing today. I voted no, I'll vote, I will abstain last time, I'll vote no to this again, um.
So would you like to, so, and then we have a motion right now on the floor to take it all together? So we probably should amend that to take items one through two, or one through, which one is it, you know, one, and then do I have a motion to do that? It's amended, okay, all those in favor for that, as amended, that, taking them all together, signify by saying aye. Opposed, eyes have it, a motion for approval of those. Move for, mo- mo- motion approved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we have item M two. And we have, uh, we have motion for third reading for, uh, those items on, uh, um, uh, oh, we have motion property seconded, any, any? Any further discussion, if none, uh, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, eyes have it, now we are up for M two. We have a motion. A motion, we have a second. A motion property seconded, all those, uh, we have, uh, any discussion, Councilman Pell?
Yeah, just, just real briefly, um, the way this is set up, it's to allow these conversions as a conditional use. Conditional uses in South Carolina are grouped at the staff level. I would say this is a feature, not a bug in this system. The over politi- politicization and socialization of land use decisions in the United States of America is one of the biggest impediments to affordable housing, because when you bring these bot things before boards of zoning appeals, design review boards, things of that nature, you get neighborhoods that come out and they find every problem in the world with the project, it's a tree, it's a curb cut, it's the height, it's the shingles, it's the this. But we all know, most often, what's really driving the equation, it's NIMBYism. And NIMBYism is one of the biggest impediments to affordable housing. I think not only is it wonderful that we have this as a conditional use in this ordinance, we should have affordable housing as conditional uses more broadly through our zoning ordinance, because it simply is not other people's business, whether we do affordable housing or not. We're not gonna just, it's not a democratic process, whether or not we have affordable housing. Because if we want to make it that way, and we want to perpetuate that, we're gonna continue to struggle, we're gonna continue to fall behind, and we're gonna continue to not deliver affordable housing. It needs to be de-politicized, not politicized, and I think that's a great feature of this ordinance, and, um, I'm happy to vote for it.
Councilwoman Parker?
I'm sure you are, it takes it out of public purview, imagine how, if we took it, if we took every annexation, every development in other people's districts, imagine if we did that, if we took it out of this body's purview to say yes or no, then we take it away from the public. So, we had a very good discussion in Community Development regarding this. The way to de-politicize it is for all of us to not make it a political vote. And if we think it's best for our constituents or the city, then we vote that way. Okay, taking it out of public purview, because your political viewpoint thinks that people won't like it, you're just taking it out of public view, okay? So, I do, I think this is a slippery slope, remember this is citywide? So the Planning Department, developers, will be able to do this citywide. Do I think it's a bad thing? No, but I think it should be done in public, like every other zoning. Do I think it's a bad thing? No. But I think it should be done in public, like every other zoning request is done. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on M2? We have a motion property seconded.
I do have a question. If there's a disagreement at staff level, where is that appeal taken?
I think we did discuss that, and it does go ultimately to council. The BZA, and then to council, right. Ultimately, it would.
So then eventually it will be.
If there's, if there's not agreement, right. Councilman Seekings?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I'm not a member of the Community Development Committee, but I did sit in on it, and it was a very broad discussion. I think I'm kind of in, sort of a little bit in between. I don't think you can de-politicize anything that we do in the city. There's a political element to all of it. I would just point out that with this ordinance, it only applies to already existing developments that are some of the most controversial developments we have in the city, anyway, that would be accommodations and hotels, right? There's anything maybe more controversial sometimes than NIMBYism, it's hotels, right? It also, there are strict requirements on what needs to be met, including parking requirements. So there are some protections in there, and the fact that if there is a disagreement at staff that can't be ironed out, going through the BZA and getting here, so we've got some protections. And the other thing we've got, Councilmember Parker, is if we see it and we don't like it, we control the ordinance, so we can go back and revisit it. I do think this is okay-ish, but I do think we should keep an eye on it, just so. Ultimately, ultimately, we are the backstop. And I think we've set up a process here through our planning staff that will work. And we, look, we've got, we have a planning staff that deals with the most complicated zoning code in the world, and they're incredibly competent at it. And it's rare that stuff sort of slips through to us, where we go, oh, my God, what are they thinking? It happens, and we've always gone and fixed it. So again, I think this is one we can keep our eye on, and we'll have enough lead time to be able to do it. Because it's not like you're going to vested rights here. I mean, it's already something that's there. It's a conditional use. So kind of in between, I'm going to vote for it with a watchful eye on how it works.
Good point. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to disagree. I do not think that our planning department, I think our planning department can be very biased in situations. It can also lean very, very strongly in favor of the administration, as we talked about who their boss is. It's going to lean, our departments are going to lean with the administration's priorities. So that's where I'll disagree with you.
Councilman McBride?
Just really quick, does it, does this allow the changing of density at all in any case? Of any, no, same density, same, just changes of use? Two, okay, got it.
Councilman Appel?
We're talking zoning, so I just got to get it out of my system. I can't, I can't bring it home. Remember, you're only getting paid three dollars an hour for this part of it, okay? Listen, I can't talk about this stuff at the House, so I got to get it out in front of you people. So all I would say is, there is nothing unique, exotic, or out of the ordinary about conditional uses. If you open up our zoning code right now, and you look at all of our different base districts, there are all kinds of uses already that are approved at the staff level. This is not something we're doing that's anything unique or anything out of the ordinary. In fact, most, I mean, there's three ways uses can be allowed in zoning. By right, conditional use, or special exception. Special exception goes to the BZA, super politicized. Conditional uses, the reason they exist is to de-politicize it. So it's done at a professional staff level review, where criteria are set up by us. We set the rules in the beginning of the game. Developer comes in, they check all the boxes, they get their permit. It's not a discretionary deal. It's a, it's less political than putting it in front of a body of appointed people at a public hearing. I agree with Mike. I guess on some level, it's politics all the way down. But this is a way to remove uncertainty, remove discretion, remove politics from the affordable housing equation, which is what we need to be driving towards broadly, if we want to get at the numbers that our friends at Bloomberg have identified for us. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion properly seconded, good discussion on M2. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Nay.
One nay.
And then we need to do third reading.
Do third reading.
There are two nays, Councilmembers McBride and Park, excuse me. There are two nays, Councilmember McBride and Councilmember Parker, is that correct?
Two nays? Sorry, I didn't hear the. Okay, if we could just keep order, and then we're almost done, guys. We need third reading?
Yes, sir.
Go move. Motion approved, motion made, properly approved. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Two nays. Okay, we're now on to miscellaneous business, which is an executive session. We would be looking to go into executive session to receive updates and discuss proposed contractual agreements, arrangements related to the purchase of property for affordable housing. Can I have a motion to go into session? Motion probably seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Yeah, we'll give a five-minute break and then meet in my office.
Hey, we are up on YouTube. All right, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Believe we got a quorum. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session? We have a motion to come out of executive property seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. We are now out of executive session. We had a brief discussion on some potential opportunities or options for contractual for affordable housing and other, affordable housing. So if there's no further business for this council, no action was taken. Thank you, Councilman Seekings. If there's no further action, meeting is adjourned.